I just was talking about the heroin coalition. The Board of County Commissioners, September 3rd, 2019. We have a number of items on our agenda. The top item is, we're going to get to it right away. It's related to the budget. And I know Jeff and staff had been working diligently to get us a budget as early as possible this year, given some of the financial challenges that we face. And so, I, right off the bat, want to thank Jeff and John Brugan and all of the staff that were working on this. I know over the weekend even. So, it's been, I would want to say, a labor of love, but I'm not sure that quite captures it. So anyways, without any further ado, please come forward and we'll look forward to your presentation.
And Commissioners, if you don't mind me doing the presentation from here, if that's okay?
Sure.
It's certainly been a labor of something.
[laughing]
But, no, I do want to also thank all staff and all the department heads and elected officials who, I think, understand the urgency of our financial situation and have assisted in some way or another in helping compile the budget recommendation for this year, which is actually a budget recommendation, but also a financial plan. This is the first year we've done it in this manner, where we've actually had a five-year pro forma that we're providing the Board, just because we want to make sure we are showing the Board how actions will impact not just next year, but also the sustainability of our operations over the long run. I also want to say, as we kick this presentation off, that this is, especially for those who might be watching for the first time, a presentation like this, this is, in fact, the kickoff of a process. This is not the conclusion of a process. This is the tip of the iceberg, if you will, in terms of the beginning formal dialogue with the Board of County Commissioners around a budget and a financial plan for the county. This is my recommendation to the Board, how the Board takes it and then chooses to act on it, not act on it, modify it, throw it away, start over. That's completely at the discretion of the Board. So, with that, I will walk you through a document which was completed really just this weekend and provided to the Board in formal format this morning. You received a draft of it earlier, but it's largely the same. So, just to get right into it, to start, the county continues to face a structural imbalance in its financial situation. I don't think this is a surprise to anyone. I see the chart up here, the graph up here that shows the visualization of that structural imbalance. Essentially, for folks watching, this means that there's a gap between our projected revenues and our expenditures to support basic services in a sustainable manner, adequately maintain our infrastructure, and address other directives of the Board's policy agenda. The total gap between projected revenues and our ability to meet these demands in 2020 is projected to be $20 million and rises in subsequent years. You will recall, in 2019, we balanced the budget by implementing some new revenues and using one-time resources that won't be available in the long run. Specifically, as we show on the slide here, we placed an additional millage on the property transfer fee, which generates close to $4 million a year. We also delayed fixes to some of our most pressing and long-term problems. Specifically, we have not addressed, comprehensively addressed, capital maintenance in our facilities. As the Board has heard time and again, we have roughly $200 million improvements needed over the next 10 years for deferred maintenance on our buildings, things, whether it's elevators and critical systems in our Justice Center, HVAC systems, fire alarm systems that are failing, major facade work on the exterior of our buildings. I have, from County Facilities Department, 4.2 million in requests right now on my desk relating to different capital systems which are either nearing the end of life or need addressing currently. Although the courts and the sheriff are doing great work with what they have, we've not allocated sustainable funding towards some of the solutions in our jail that comprehensively promote reductions in recidivism through reentry, alternatives to treatment, and alternatives to incarceration and treatment. We've delayed upgrading our antiquated IT systems, meaning that we're operating on an outdated financial system, an outdated jail management system, and no records management system in our Justice Center, meaning that we still have personnel working off of legacy systems, paper files, that type of thing, in terms of coordinating with other elements of the justice system. We have not fixed our 911 funding problem, meaning that our 911 center operates on a funding model that promotes fragmentation and continues to take revenue from our local government partners, which could be used to fund on-the-ground public safety improvements. We've pushed general fund expenditures into restricted funds. We did this in many places, including most prominently in the courts and in the coroner's office, where we funded an entire division of the crime lab out of a restricted fund, which won't be available in 2020. And as has been consistent in the Board's policy document, I've not yet been able to provide the Board with a comprehensive recommendation for investing in partnerships with our local political subdivisions to help them with the goal of improving their infrastructure in their communities. So, at the end of the day, we balanced the 2019 budget on new revenues and by delaying critical initiatives, and we still, right now, face an operating deficit of close to $5 million as we look to close the year. So, how did we get here? Just a little bit of historical background, which I know the Board is well aware of. But, we have a general fund budget supported by multiple revenues, including sales tax, property tax, state revenues, various fees, and interest earnings. Over the past decade, several things began to happen. The state revenue began to fall off significantly. Local government fund was reduced. Property taxes were reassessed at lower levels during the recession and have yet to entirely spring back. Sales tax, which grew at a 7% clip through the 70s and into the 90s, slowed to average only 1.5% since then. And on top of this, all of our service demands have remained or increased. So, we're still required to do all the mandates associated with a county government, running elections, funding 911, running the court system in a jail, and making sure that those systems and programs are run in a way that are best for the community and not just doing the bare minimum approach to address what is a more comprehensive problem. We also have increasing levels of required capital maintenance on our county infrastructure. And of course, we have a need to continue to attract and retain top talent. And this is even before you consider some of the problems in our first-ring suburban communities relating to poverty, lost tax revenue, disinvestment, and population loss. So, we've had revenues stagnate, and we've had expenditure pressures that have ultimately put us on this crossroads of fiscal solvency. So, where do we go from here? So, the recommended budget before you recommend or proposes a quarter-cent sales tax to begin in April of 2020. In practicality, that will essentially result in a level sales tax as the union terminal tax rolls off at the same time. The tax will only collect a half-year's worth of, under this proposal, the tax will only collect a half-year's of revenue in 2020, or roughly $20 million, which will be sufficient to address the defined structural deficit next year. At full implementation, the tax should be sufficient to address the structural deficit into the future. Although our five-year planning pro forma, which is included in your budget document that you have in front of you, does show a moderate imbalance in years four and five of the projection, but I feel this is an imbalance that we can manage around in recognition that ultimately, things are always going to be tight. We're expecting they will always be tight, but the recommendation at least provides the Board with the resources to manage around those moderate deficits. So, the proposed budget prioritizes several different things. As would be expected, the budget certainly supports operations of public safety, continues with funding of departments such as the Sheriff's Office, criminal investigations, patrol services, and allows for a sustained approach to reentry and treatment within the Justice Center. The plan also supports our ability to work smarter, whether it's through technology improvements in the Justice Center or our staffing capabilities in the crime lab to address workload challenges. It also places necessary investments into our county infrastructure to address those deferred capital challenges that create both a financial and a safety risk for the county public and our workforce. And the plan does this by supporting both annual deferred maintenance fixes and providing for additional bonding capacity to address some of our bigger challenges. The plan also supports partnerships with our communities. First, the plan solves our 911 funding problem. As a brief aside, I still am hoping at some point that the state takes action to address the ultimate challenge of 911 statewide, but we've been working on this issue for roughly 10 years now, and that hasn't happened yet. And I think we need to work with our communities to either provide them the guidance that the detail rate is going to continue to increase, or the Board of County, or the county takes that responsibility on. This particular recommendation reduces the detail rate down to $5 over two years, injecting an additional $3 million into local public safety services. The plan also, for the first time, allows for a more deliberate partnership with communities to assist with local community revitalization efforts. Specifically, over the five-year horizon, the plan invests between $3 and $5 million annually in specific community revitalization and infrastructure needs, site readiness to address the scarcity of shovel-ready sites, and promotes a stronger response to addressing affordable and workforce housing and property maintenance challenges. I should say that that recommendation specifically is at a very high level, recognizing that the Board of County Commissioners ultimately will set priorities as to how those funds and revitalization funds in communities would ultimately be targeted and used. So, in terms of next steps, the proposed five-year plan involves the continuation of a current revenue stream, but ultimately, to implement it as has been laid out in the proposed budget before you, it does require some steps by the Board. While the Board has not signed off on or approved anything at this point, I would recommend passage of several resolutions, as we have done in years past, to provide the Board with the flexibility and the opportunity to consider various revenue solutions in accordance and alongside of the formal budget hearings that you will have throughout this fall. So, essentially, what I'm saying is, to the degree that the Board is going to consider a revenue, let's make those hearings and the consideration of that, let's allow that to mirror the process of your normal and typical budget hearings. So, if the Board ultimately decides that it wishes to proceed with the administration's recommendation, the calendar on this slide and the calendar in your budget lays that out for you and talks about a timeline for doing that. Of course, we've started this process a month early this year, so that if the Board ultimately decides that it wants to go a different direction, wants to propose a different revenue solution, wants to look at an entirely different framework for balancing the budget entirely, this time allows for that. I will also state that we are anticipating recommendations from Crow, which is the consultant brought on in partnership with the CBC and the CRBC. And I do want to thank the CBC and the CRBC this afternoon, who have helped us fund the ability to take an objective outside look at the county's finances. Ideally, I would have had the recommendation from Crow before we began the budget deliberation process. We're not quite there yet. We should be receiving that recommendation, or at least a first round of recommendations from them, in early October and right before the Board gets into the public hearing process. So, of course, to the degree that Crow comes back with some recommendations that would alter this framework, we could certainly act on that and adjust that framework accordingly. So, I did want to make that caveat and qualification as well. So, with that, Commissioners, again, I've gone through what is a fairly lengthy process and a fairly complex financial situation in a very brief amount of time. I'm certain the Board will want to schedule additional staff meeting consideration of this up until we start formal public hearings. Certainly happy to do that. But again, wanted to also reserve a little bit of time today for any Board questions, if in fact you have them. So, thank you, Commissioners.
And thanks, Jeff. Thanks for all of this information. Yeah, recognizing that this is part of a process, I was going to note the timing for the public hearings, which are going to be important to the process, and wonder if we want to continue to have this kind of front of mind, because we are in a pretty aggressive timeframe here, and I don't want to lose track of the comments and ideas from all three of us related to the budget. And so, I wonder if we just want to have this on our staff agendas every week, we're back into our weekly meeting routine, and just have it there as a placeholder, whether or not we've got something substantial or we're still kind of digging through the information. I just want to make sure that this is right there, top of mind, in that the public also has the opportunity to come in and speak to something that's an agenda item. So, if that sounds okay, let's go ahead and schedule this for the upcoming staff meetings as we go, top item at the staff meeting, and then we will have some time to discuss, you know, what we're all thinking related to the budget, in addition to the public hearings that we have. Okay? Any comments or questions?
Madam President, my question is related to the public hearings. Are they normally all held here, or do we go out to the community at all to get some input?
I believe we've done budget hearings several different ways. We have had budget hearings here. We've also had budget hearings out in the community, just depending upon the discretion of the Board. But I know we have held them out in the community pretty regularly as it relates to passage of the budget. Certainly, when we have ever looked at any kind of fee or revenue increase, we've always made the effort to be out in the community as well for that. But of course, it's all at the discretion of the Board in terms of where you want to have those hearings.
So, yeah, I would recommend at least one of those hearings be out in the community.
Yeah, I think probably both.
So, normally, we only have two public hearings?
Jeff, and you would know this too, do we typically have two outside the building and then one inside the building? Is that how we've done it?
I think it is varied, but I think that's typical, that would be the typical framework.
Okay. Okay. At least. That's an at least, yeah. Do you have any other?
That time I have, yeah, right now.
Madam President, thank you. First, I concur, I think we all do, on keeping this scheduled at every staff meeting. That way, if something needs to be discussed, we will. That way, the members of the public can come at any one of our staff meetings and speak to us about it, if they choose to do so. So, I think that's a great idea. Support that. As far as public hearing goes, it has been a hodgepodge over the years, but typically, we have at least two public hearings out in the community every year, and at least one here at one of our regularly scheduled Board meetings. Outside of that, or staff meeting, outside of that, there have been occasions when we've had more, but it just depends on the circumstance and the issue. So, at least three has been the norm, has been my experience. Otherwise, as to the budget itself, we're all just getting this for the first time to get a good look at it. Jeff, thank you for the summary of everything. As this process goes, the administration makes a recommendation to us. We then go over it, come up with ideas on our own that may be simply on our own or shaped by public input that we get at the various public hearings. Inevitably, in every case, it's always a combination of the two, and we then publicly debate that, get further public comment still on what it is that it looks like we may be moving toward adopting as a budget, and then, at the end, we'll make final decisions on what it is. There's a lot of good in this, Jeff, and I thank you and staff for all of your very hard work in putting together a recommended budget. For our friends in the media, it's important to emphasize, this is a recommended budget by county administration. Does not represent the input or proposals by individual Board members or anything like that at this point. That's all the work that we now have to do from this point moving forward. My guess is that there will be a lot of what's been recommended that will still be in the final budget, but based on past experience, there will be a lot that's changed also. So, that will be the process in front of us. And so, for the members of the public who are here, those who are watching, or those that will get involved further still after today, please, your comments are very welcome. We want them. We need to hear from the public. We hope for a very robust and full public process, because only at the end of that will we know that we've been able to fashion a budget that is truly reflective of Hamilton County and this community. So, that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Is this accessible to the public online?
It is now online, I believe. It is now online. Yes, it is. So, HamiltonCountyOhio.gov. The public will be able to access this document on the homepage, Lisa?
It's on the budget page.
We'll link it from the homepage as well.
And so, if a member of the public had a comment and they weren't available to come down to a public hearing, how do they go about commenting via the website?
There will be a link on the website to a comment. There is an Ask the Administrator section of the webpage that we will link to that directly, so that if someone has a comment on the budget, it'll come directly to me.
Okay. And all be kind of the same platform on the website?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, just wanted to say, and I may have just glossed over this, I wanted to make sure I hit this a little bit more heavily. On the calendar, and again, this is a recommended calendar based upon the recommended budget, and it looks to set public hearings on October 3rd and the 10th, and as I am recommending, a revenue associated with this. This calendar is also scripted out based upon those various revenue, the requirements under the Higher Revised Code as it relates to implementing those revenues. So, the first step in that would be the passage by the Board next Tuesday, September 10th, of resolution to set public hearings for that revenue. Typically, what we have done, while I'm recommending a quarter-cent sales tax, typically, we have had the Board pass multiple resolutions of different levels, et cetera, just to make sure that if the Board decides to do something, but at a lower level, you'll have that opportunity in addition to the opportunity of not doing anything at all. It doesn't commit you to doing anything. It just sets the calendar such that if you do decide to do that, you're able to do it down the road. So, I wanted to make sure the Board is aware of that recommendation to bring something forward next week. It's not a resolution to pass a sales tax. It's simply a resolution to start a public hearing process. I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of that.
Madam President, two additional questions, if I may. Jeff, first of all, I have not read through all of this before today's meeting.
Can understand.
But, in terms of the revenue sources that you are relying on, I know one of the ways we balanced last year's budget was with sort of a one-time look at an increase in the transfer tax. Are you relying on that for this year as well?
We have that in for 2020. We take it out in the pro forma on January 1 of 2021. Since we're only getting one half-year of revenue under the sales tax, we left it in for 2020. We took it out in the pro forma on January 1 of 2021.
Do we have to have separate hearings scheduled as it relates to the continuation of that, then?
Not necessarily to the continuation of that. I think that particular fee will continue on, but we'll have to check to see, in terms of discontinuing it, when we decide to discontinue it, if the Board needs to set a hearing for that, we can check on that.
All right. Because I know at the time that we discussed adopting that, it was always with the understanding that, as we look to future budgets, depending upon what collections were or what other new revenue sources may be relied upon, that the ideal was to take that off.
Correct.
And eliminate that tax.
Correct.
Thank you. Second, excuse me, second, as it relates to the public hearings, we've tried with varying success at having those public hearings become sort of virtual public hearings as well, where members of the public who might be watching had the ability to call in questions or comments during the context of the meeting itself. Are we in a better position this year, perhaps, to introduce that kind of technology in connection with our meeting?
Well, certainly with a month's notice here, yes. I think the answer to that is yes. So, we'll work on something related to that, whatever format that winds up to be.
Terrific. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Madam President.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I do want to emphasize, or rather, reemphasize that this is part of a process. We have all recently gotten these documents and gotten through them to a point, but this is an ongoing conversation that we're going to have with the administration related to their recommendations. And so, we'll look forward to that process and take our due time getting public input and having comment from the three of us as well. So, thank you, Jeff and John, especially, for getting this in front of us. And I do like the kind of the forward-thinking nature of more than just one year in front of us right here. I mean, I think that's really helpful, because in a vacuum, you know, it's just hard to make decisions. So, I appreciate kind of the forward-thinking nature of this document.
Thank you, Commissioners. And again, if I didn't do so deliberately, I do want to thank John, obviously, and want to thank the entire budget staff, Lisa, Rob, Lisa, Jen, and whom are forgetting. That's it. That is the entire budget staff now.
I see those budget cuts.
As well as Holly and Bridget, who I know were in here over the weekend as well, doing some final work on this. And again, thanks to the entire county staff and department heads, elected officials, and of course, to the Board for your policy guidance as we've entered into this.
Thank you.
Madam President, one other question, and this is to you, Madam President. I know that by law, we have until, technically, until December 31 to complete the budget, but what is the timetable you would like us to operate on?
Well, having listened to the administration talk about their ability to enact a budget for next year with some kind of stability behind it, and I'm hoping that we can get something done far before the end of the year. I don't really have a timeframe in mind personally. I just know that the administration is on a pretty aggressive schedule so that we can provide some stability going into the budget next year. So, that would be my hope. But I want to make sure that we've got ample time for the public hearings and for conversations amongst ourselves and with the administration related to, because, you know, this is a challenging budget, as it has been ever since I've gotten here. And so, you know, there are a lot of big decisions to make here, and so, I want to make sure we take ample time to do that, but give administration enough time to implement and get it ready for next year. So, that's generally those.
Certainly work to meet your timetable, whatever that is that you establish. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Our next item is related to MSD. MSD Updates on the SBU Program and FEMA Grant Application for Money Creek Properties. Diana Christie and Mary Lynn Loder are here, as is Jack Renekham. So, good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. I have something I'm going to pass out, but hang on a second. I don't want to drop everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What I just provided was just some additional information about the budget issues with the SBU program, which is what we're here to talk about today. So, what you have in front of you, the longer page is our detailed report that we update and keep running totals of our SBU program. That report is available on our website. As you can see right now, it is current through the end of July of 2019. But I really wanted to draw your attention to the single page with the table on it that highlights our 2019 budget status, and just walk through why we're here today to request the additional SBU funding. As you know, the SBU program has three components. They are the initial SBU response, which requires MSD to send crews out when there is a water and basement or sewer backup event at a property. Along with that is the cleaning and disinfection work that is done if a property did in fact have a SBU. The second component is the SBU claims process, and that's where anyone that had a qualifying event can submit a damage claim to us for property damage, and those claims are processed and settlements offered. And so, there's some legal expenses involved with doing that. And then, the third component is the SBU prevention program. And the prevention program is, what's required by the consent decree is that if we have, a property has two or more qualifying events in a five-year period, MSD is to install a solution to that property to prevent future backups. So, that's the SBU PP you'll see abbreviated. So, again, those three components are how we break out our budget primarily, and we're again talking today about non-personnel funding. The shortfall that we are projecting is in the claims and the prevention program. We are not, right now, projecting a shortfall in our SBU response, so, meaning if we were to have a significant event, really based on what we see throughout the year, we never know really what's going to happen, but based on trends and what we see monthly, we believe we have enough money to continue to respond to all the, you know, any kind of storm and to send crews. and to send crews out to do the cleaning and the remediation work at properties. So, I'd like to first start with the budget shortfall for claims. So, as of July 31st, we had paid about $1.4 million for 128 claims this year. We project this to be about $900,000 short. Actually, we project this to be, I'm not looking at the right thing. It shows on your thing. So, under claims, yeah, the shortage is about $900,000. I was right. That does not include some additional funding that we do still have from prior years. But, we really, this is indicated at the bottom on your list. We really only still have about, it's less than $500,000 remaining from some of those large appropriations from prior years. We are aware of some significant claims that are still pending from the 2016 storm. So, it really is likely that we will need that additional money this year to settle all of those outstanding claims. For the prevention program, the significant costs here are for the professional services to design and then do the construction work for the individual property installations. We spend on average about over $9,000 per property just to do the design and to work with the property owner on the type of solution that's best for their home. And then, it is about $43,000 estimated per property for these prevention program installations. So, as you can see, we're spending a lot of money. This year, we have already, this year, we're projecting about a $3.2 million shortfall. And that is if we continue to proceed at the same rate we are. We have, we've completed about 73 so far this year. That was as of July 31st. We have at least 100 properties that are in queue, meaning we're evaluating or we're working with them. So, you know, we won't complete another 105. We won't complete 105 this year, but we expect to complete another 40 to 50. So, that's where we're coming up with the shortfall in order to continue to do that work for the customers that are eligible for prevention program solutions. I think I wanted to share the report, again, the running total that we show annually. As you can see, the prevention program is where this program, where this SBU costs have really, I mean, we did have the significant claims from 2016. But, the other, I guess, you know, consequence of having these bigger storms that have more qualifying SBU events is we have a lot more properties that are eligible for the prevention programs. And we just aren't able to keep up with solving these problems with other projects, whether it's a, you know, a capital project to, you know, increase the capacity or something else. So, instead, we're going in property by property and installing these devices. So, you can see it really jumped in the last few years, the number of properties that were eligible for the prevention program. And with that, I really, you know, I just, I think that's the budget information I have and shared with you. And I think if you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you for the presentation. Can, I think I misheard you when you talked about, I hope I misheard you, when you talked about the design and construction piece of this, where the bulk of the deficit is. Could you say one more time, on average, what you're spending per property? And for the public's benefit, kind of better describe what exactly, because my understanding is this is a property that has had more than one event that would then qualify for something like this. Could you detail that just a little bit for us?
Sure. So, these come to us, sometimes customers reach out on us, reach out to us on their own to request eligibility for a prevention device. Otherwise, we do have a process in place where we identify properties that have had two or more, so really, it's more than one qualifying event in five years. Then, we send out a questionnaire. They complete that. We do some visits to figure out what the potential solution is for their property. But, per property, we are, because we actually use a design, we have three design firms under contract that design the solution. Per property, those design solutions are averaging $9,000. I think I had $9,500. That's just to do the design work. And then, we're spending $43,000 on average per property. It is, it's more than, I think, what was ever envisioned that this program would be as far as what, how you prevent the backups. Most of the time, we're installing pumps, varying, various types of pumps. So, we have grinder pumps, ejector pumps, and storm pumps are the three typical ones. And it really just depends on how the plumbing and then the gravity of the property, whether they have a, you know, where the main sewer is and what you're trying to prevent from backflowing into the home. We don't, we aren't able to prevent backups just by installing a simple valve most of the time. So, that's why these are becoming very costly. And I did have our folks provide some additional information to me to understand that. Like, does this, do we have some really big ones and then really small ones? Or is this a good actual mean of the, of what we're seeing? And it really is, I'd say, about, you know, the bulk of the properties that we're seeing are really in this range, in the $40,000 range. We have a few outliers where they're larger and more costly. And those are typically in relation to an SBU settlement where we've agreed to do certain work on the property. The solutions we design, keep in mind also, the way the program is structured now, MSD owns these, I mean, has, we have the work we do. We have a covenant that's recorded on the deeds so that they are maintained on the property. And we have contracts as well to do the operation and maintenance. So, we do about yearly inspections and any maintenance that's required on the work that we do. So, there's a cost associated with that, too. As of now, our projection for this year, we're able to maintain and, you know, do the routine maintenance of the existing devices. It's the ongoing work.
And just one, I'll turn it over. Just one last question. Are these, we've had a lot of major storm events as, you know, in the last couple of years. Are the, I was looking at the timeline. Are these related to, and they're not related to any particular events, are they? It's just this trend where, or am I incorrect there?
I think you can see the jump after 2016, which was the large storm on August 28, 2016. You can see the SBU, let's see. I'm not looking at the right thing. Yeah, so you see the total for 2016, you've got, it went from 32 in 2015 to 170. So, but since then, we also had a few really large storms in 2017. And again, last year, we had a few. So, we just have a lot more homes that are getting hit more than once. The other obstacles here are that the, a lot of the qualifying events, because of the way the program's been interpreted, they're getting a significant amount of overland flow. So, while there may be a capacity issue, in order to design something, we are also having to keep in mind, you know, the overland flow. But, we cannot protect them from that in most instances. We're, you know, we're not able to do a stormwater solution, for example, for the properties.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, thank you for your report, your graph. I would just ask that we get it sooner than today. So, we, I think it's a little unfair for me to try to look at trends and numbers and, you know, I don't remember seeing this before. And I know that you guys are asking for lots of money for MSD. So, soon as you get it, I'd like to get it because I like to study what I'm doing and ask some informed questions. So, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Portin?
Director, I appreciate the update on this. I wanted to first, did you say, and again, I want to make sure I heard this correctly, total 105 properties that we want to, they're in the process of being evaluated for cleanup or fix. But, less than half of those are going to be done still this year. Is that right?
Yeah, I understand that we have 105 that have been contacted by us or have contacted us and are in the process of either being evaluated or set up for a design work. I just, just the pace of how we get that work done, we hoped, we plan to do them all. I just don't think they will all be completed in 2019. Our projection is based on about half of those.
Okay. And that's just because of the magnitude of the work involved with each one?
Yes, yes. So, it's, I mean, we are moving pretty quickly. And if we didn't get the funding today, it would be stalled, obviously, until next year. So, we don't want to do that. But, you know, I think just the capacity of our team and the contractors that we use even, I don't think we can go much faster than that.
Yeah, I don't want to stall it either. So, I'm hoping we'll act on it. Are these all in the Northside area? And I'm asking that specifically because I continue to be contacted by homeowners in the Muddy Creek area about what's going on with their homes and their properties and buyback and so on. Is anything involving Muddy Creek involved in your update today?
No, this update, this was just related to the request for the SBU funding from our budget. Mary Lynn actually also has some information she wants to share with you about the OEMA grant that we're applying for, for the Muddy Creek properties. And it's just for the Muddy Creek properties. There are no other areas such as Northside that would be included in that. So, she was going to give you a separate presentation on that and answer those questions. I mean, I can answer them as well, but.
Well, I'll hold off until Ms. Loder is at the DAS, or at the podium to ask those questions. Thank you very much. That's all.
Well, with that, why don't we roll into Mary Lynn's presentation?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Okay.
Thanks, Mary Lynn.
Good afternoon and thank you. What I've just handed out is essentially a summary of the OEMA grant and the property boundaries that MSD submitted to the state through the Hazard Mitigation Program. This is a program that the Ohio Emergency Management Agency has made available through FEMA from an April 9, 2019 storm and funds that FEMA provided to the state of Ohio. And so, the Hazard Mitigation Program is a program offered by the state specifically to mitigate hazards in flood-prone areas. And so, specifically, the grant that we submitted a pre-application for on July 10th was submitted. We actually submitted four applications to the Ohio Emergency Management Agency in order to try to increase the chances of being able to get some, some or at least one of them. So, we were actually notified that we were given the green light to submit a full application for a grant up to about $3 million. And so, the grant amount is about $3.16 million. And the area that you see here that's highlighted, the map, is all along Muddy Creek Road in both City of Cincinnati and Westwood and Green Township. It includes up to 25 properties. And all of these homes were built between 1939, 1955. Those that are identified in red have the SBU protection, as Diana was talking about. They were installed, protection some years ago, some of them, you know, over, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. The ones that are in yellow are, we think, that are also going to be a benefit to be able to purchase. And we have to go through essentially a rigorous benefit cost analysis that we'll be doing in accordance with FEMA's requirements. But, we will also be working with the township as well as, you know, of course, MSD, our desire is to try to create more of a passive stormwater feature there and can also work with regional planning, perhaps, on, you know, what that might look like and city planning. But, I also do want to just point out that this area that we're talking about, it receives drainage from over, you know, two square miles. And Muddy Creek Road, before it was constructed, obviously, was a creek and had a lot of drainage that came to that area. On the backside of the handout that I provided is a little bit more detail of these particular properties and the addresses of them, as well as just some of the basics that we've been able to pull together from the auditor's website. And I'll also note in here, the red highlighted cells are essentially, you know, giving you an indication of when we installed the SBU protection devices. And as you can also see from the chart provided, you can see the dates that we had SBU damages for these properties. And even those properties that we see, that already had protection, we have since paid out claims for damages. So, even though there is protection, it is not necessarily, you know, completely protecting those properties from a sewer backup event or, you know, an overflowing manhole that gets mixed with stormwater. And it still gets in many of, you know, the homes because there's recessed driveways or the first floor elevation is higher than the stormwater, the floodplain. So, we think that, you know, there's still a lot of work to do. And we are doing everything that we need to do to be able to complete the application. The application, the full application is due November 16th. So, we are going to be having a public meeting for the property owners. We've already reached out to them to let them know that we applied for the grant. And, you know, we're working on the application. We're going to need, you know, to get different surveys done on the properties to determine the elevation of the first floor, as well as we're doing different mapping and modeling that needs to be done in accordance with FEMA's 100-year floodplain boundaries because there is not currently a 100-year floodplain boundary. And we need to essentially develop that. So, we're in the process of doing that. So, if all of these properties are interested, and again, I've got the budget, just the general budget that we're, again, we'll continue to modify as the application is being developed. But, this is just, you know, for an order of magnitude. If all of these properties were interested, based on the auditor's value and then also kind of considering, you know, a fair market value factor of some amount to bring it up to, like a fair market value, because the auditor's value obviously isn't fair market value all the time. So, we think that with the demolition and asbestos mediation and all the other relocation benefits that are included in this grant, that it's possible that all of, or most of these properties could be acquired to mitigate the hazards associated with it. So, really just wanted to give you an update that we did submit the pre-application. We got the green light for about $3.16 million. That's all of federal funds. There is a match. And the match is 12.5% paid by the state, above and beyond the 3.15. And then, the local match, which would be MSD dollars at about $360,000, if we went up to that full amount. So.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the numbers. So, do the numbers in front of us, then, with your budget, that includes all of the properties? I'm surprised the fair market is as low as it is.
Well, we just don't know. You know, that's something that really won't be determined until we start negotiating and whatnot, you know. But, you know, there's different ways to determine that, you know. And I kind of did a double check just looking at what Zillow, you know, because essentially comps will be used and all that stuff.
Okay.
I think that does, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Was that your question?
It was one of them. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. So, close to $4 million total cost. The $300,000 or so local MSD match?
About $360,000.
Do you need us to act on that also?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And then, when is that meeting with the homeowners?
September 10th. It'll be at the Dunham Recreation Center next Tuesday night at 6:30. We sent notices out, I think, last Fri, a week from Friday. Yes.
And are we able to advance any money subject to supplementation by grant dollars? Or is that permissible?
I don't believe that's permissible.
Okay. All right. Is that, you don't believe it or that we know that it's not?
I don't believe it is, but I can verify.
Okay. Jeff, I see you.
Yeah, just, I did want to advise the Board, we did have EMA check on that as well. And they came back with the same answer after checking with the state, that you could not stand in someone's place or advance funding and get reimbursed through this particular program.
All right, thank you. But, thank you for looking into that, Rock. Appreciate it. It is further evidence of the counties, as well as MSD's desire to be as proactive and as helpful as we can for the homeowners that are affected by this. Okay. Let's see, one other question, because I know residents are going to ask this.
Your bike's now.
Oh, gosh.
Larry's signaling.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Larry. I'm not going to repeat everything. Okay. One other question, because I'm sure someone will ask this. So, we're not allowed to advance money subject to being reimbursed, but. Um, so we're not allowed to advance money subject to being reimbursed, um, but, um, if there are cases where the county were inclined to, uh, simply advance money, period, not subject to being reimbursed, is there anything impermissible about that?
I can check. I'm not, I'm not sure. I can't answer that right now.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I just have one question. Uh, the 12.5% paid by local funding is strictly MSD funding, that's it?
Yes, MSD would be prepared to provide that local match because of the mitigation associated with, uh, reducing future damages from an SBU.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And I, I think, uh, I speak for all three of us when I say, uh, we're delighted that we can find a different funding source for this as opposed to, uh, the ratepayer dollars in the MSD fund. So compliments to you and, and others at MSD for taking this approach with this. I know we've talked about it before at a public hearing, but, um, the timing was a little concerning because there's a bit of a, a timeframe here, but in the end, I think it's worth $3 million to, to try to get this grant finalized. So thank you for doing the work on that.
Yep.
Okay, so we will look forward to, um, advancing whatever we need. Do we need something for the SBU item today or do we, do we have it in front of us on Thursday?
So there is legislation in front of you today, commissioners on this at the board wish to, uh, approve MSD's request for a supplemental appropriation related to the operating budget for SBU today. Uh, it is in front of you. Um, I would defer to MSD in terms of identifying any timing impacts of today versus Thursday and whether that was, um, uh, that timing was critical, uh, for any aspect of this, whether it's, um, uh, device installation or getting started on that, that type of thing. Um, the administration has looked at the request in general and I think ultimately, um, it, it makes sense in the context of where the program is, um, currently at this point in the year. Um, I do think, uh, probably does bode for a, a broader conversation in the long term about just the, the, the cost of fixes versus things like we're doing through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in terms of, um, acquisition of properties, et cetera. But as it relates to the, the immediate need, um, the administration would concur with the, the recommendation of MSD.
Okay. Yeah, and of course, uh, none of us mentioned it, but of course there's this balance here. Uh, how often do you go in and do these repairs as opposed to, uh, the larger fix, which is purchasing the property? How many times does this has to have to happen? Um, so you're, you are right. Uh, we've talked about that at public hearings and I'm sure we'll continue to debate that issue. Uh, so, uh, I, I think I heard that, um, everyone is comfortable with advancing this today for the SBU program.
No, I didn't get to talk about it.
Oh, all right.
So, Madam President, um, the corroborating information that was given, uh, today, I'd like to have time to review it, um, and then just make a decision on Thursday. Um, obviously they sent this or gave this to us because they thought it was important enough to advance the budget that they need, but can we have, can I have time to review it, um, and do it on Thursday? I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Commissioner Fortun, any comments, questions?
Um, I'm, I'm prepared to act whenever you'd like to advance it. Madam President, I think we always as a, you know, a matter of courtesy of four members, an opportunity to look at things just presented, so I have no objection to, at all to Commissioner Summer O'Dumas's request for two days.
Okay, so let's bring this in by leave then on Thursday.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And we will move on it at that point.
Hmm.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
I miss somebody on the MSD team. A new face to...
I'd like to introduce, uh, Clifton Pendergrass. He's with us, um, in the Office of Director and he's going to be assisting with the, uh, the FEMA grants. He's actually been certified with, uh, on the benefit cost analysis with FEMA and, uh, really getting him up to speed on that whole process so that we can best utilize, um, those available dollars. In fact, we did submit another pre-application for Muddy Creek of Phase Two on Friday, so we'll find out about that in about a month, but we're, you know, going full steam ahead on the, on the Phase One.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so that'll be a by leave on Thursday.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam President, I'm sorry, Jackie was saying, oh, Director Crossley from EMA is here, yeah.
Were you involved in that? Did you want to say anything about that? I do know.
I'm sorry, I'm following in.
I just didn't know if you were here. I saw you two be talking. I thought maybe you needed to say something about that. Right. No?
No, we're, uh, we're very excited that, uh, MSD's taking advantage of that funding, especially with the state, the money they're putting in there too. Uh, in my five years here, Muddy Creek's been on my radar since 16, since the event of 16, and so I'm excited that, uh, a solution's been found for them and it's a great opportunity to take advantage of that federal fund. So it's the positive side of a federal declaration, I guess you could say, that this funding becomes available. And there's going to be a lot more mitigation money coming down the pipe thanks to the Disaster Relief and Recovery Act. Uh, so there's going to be lots of opportunities in the future.
Good.
I did want to mention our Wireless Emergency Alert Test tomorrow, 9:00 AM.
You're here for a reason, Nick. What's the reason?
We're receiving that and of course, as always, sign up for Alert Hamilton County. Thank you.
Say it again. Say it again.
Uh, we're doing a test of the Wireless Emergency Alert System tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM. Uh, so that will be going out to all cell phone towers in Hamilton County. And then, uh, we also encourage everybody to sign up for Alert Hamilton County as well.
Madam President?
Yep.
Just while you're here also, Director, um, anything, uh, that you have to update us on any local efforts in assisting the Florida, South Carolina, Georgia, North Carolina coast regarding Hurricane Dorian?
So with the, uh, pathway changing and then of course the, the hurricane downgrading itself, uh, they've actually turned back a couple of teams. I think Butler County is down there, so we've had no official request at the state as of now. I think they've slowed down as we wait and see what it does if it heads up to the Carolinas. So Florida should be, should be able to withstand the tropical storm force winds that may hit it. Uh, and so then we'll be watching the coast of North Carolina. Last time we did send people down to North Carolina, so we'll wait and see what happens with that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, um, our next item is a presentation, uh, by, uh, HCDC. Harry Blanton is here, um, requested at our last meeting related to CRAs, Community Reinvestment Areas. Uh, we had two in front of us, Springfield Township and Sycamore Township, and we took a pause to get more information related to the nature of CRAs in general, um, to better inform our decision. So if you could take it away, Harry, and I do have a number of speaker's cards related to this item. Uh, and so, Harry, I'm going to have you go first and then we'll get to the speaker's cards.
Thank you, Commissioner Greathouse.
Thank you.
I just have a few comments before the presentation, if that's okay. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing HDC the chance to review the Ohio Community Reinvestment Area Program and its use in Hamilton County. As a staff to Hamilton County's Economic Development Office, HDC works with the townships in the county to administer this program, including answering any questions you might have before making a decision on a CRA. Our actions are done in cooperation with the local community and follow the rules outlined in the Ohio Revised Code. As I stated at the commission meeting last week, we rely upon township officials to help determine what is appropriate in their community and make sure that the proposed CRA conforms to Ohio law. HDC, through our administration of this program, also makes sure that the rights of our school districts are also represented per the law. I think it is important to point out that the municipalities in Hamilton County are allowed by Ohio law to administer the CRA program without county approval. The township CRAs that we are discussing today are only a part of the overall picture. Townships rely upon the county to administer the program in a way that keeps them competitive with all of Ohio's communities as well as with communities outside of Ohio. As you will see in the presentation that HDC has prepared, 21 municipal communities in Hamilton County use this program extensively. HDC thinks that it is important that all of our communities, both municipalities and townships, have the advantage of using this tool when trying to encourage development, property investment, and revitalization in their neighborhoods. Since Hamilton County is an urban county, we have many obstacles and hurdles that other outlying communities with greenfields do not have. The CRA program is a tool that allows our communities to remain vibrant and to encourage new investment. HDC has prepared a presentation with more information if you would like me to proceed. Thank you.
Yes, please.
So last, uh, week, uh, we gave a similar presentation, but we've updated it with new information based on some of the questions that were asked.
Thank you.
Uh, as we pointed out last week, the CRA is a real property tax exemption program and, uh, it's a designated area of land certified by the state of Ohio. And it's a tool to encourage new investment in areas designated by the local community. I decided to add in here a direct, uh, section of the Ohio Revised Code so that, uh, we can focus on what is an actual CRA per the Ohio Revised Code. Uh, I think the most important thing to focus on is the last, uh, basic sentence that, uh, says the area included in the description is one in which housing facilities or structures of historical significance are located, so they just have to be present in the area, and new housing construction and repair of existing facilities or structures are discouraged. So that's, I think, an important thing to focus on. Uh, as we point out, townships per Ohio Revised Code are established, township CRAs are established and administered by the county with approval from the township. HDC works with the township to establish a community investment area, determines the type of development supported, determine the maximum terms of the abatements, grant abatements to qualifying projects, and monitor compliance of active abatements on an annual basis. CRA abatements can be granted to office, industrial, retail, and residential projects. Um, last, uh, week, there was a question about whether this was a precedent or whether we'd done these CRAs before, so we wanted to make everyone aware of that there are 10 existing township CRAs in Hamilton County, uh, spread across many of our different townships. Uh, I also copied some information out of the state's website that I thought was relevant. Uh, again, it's a, a definition on the state that, uh, says this program permits municipalities or counties to designate areas, uh, where investment has been discouraged as a CRA to encourage revitalization of the existing housing stock and the development of new structures. I also wanted to point out, uh, from the state's, uh, website, all the different municipalities in Hamilton County that have used the community reinvestment area, so just want to make you aware of that. We do not approve those as a county. They're able to do it on their own, so... So you can see in there, there are communities like Blue Ash, Madeira, Merrymont, very nice communities that have used this tool as well. Uh, so I thought I'd focus on three of the existing township CRAs in Hamilton County to give a little more background on ones that have been approved before by the state of Ohio. The first one is in Anderson Township. Uh, this is an area, as you can see, just on the southern part of the map, uh, this is Anderson Town Center. Uh, and the northern part is the Anderson Center, which is that public facility that Anderson Township has their local, uh, recreation facility and other amenities in their community. Uh, it also includes, uh, some housing. Um, and, um, this little statement right here is kind of, uh, overview of what the CRA was set up for. Um, it's adjacent to the Anderson Town Center, includes the Anderson Center, which houses a recreation facility and Township Administration Building, a multi-family residential structure, and 2.2 acres of vacant commercial land. Uh, remnants of a mixed-use development, the foundation of the, so a developer started to develop something, uh, back in the mid 2000s, um, and, uh, stopped construction, uh, in 2009 and, uh, did not go forward with the project. So Anderson Township asked us to set up a CRA to encourage new investment from a new developer. So that was basically, uh, the establishment of that CRA. So that's one, one example of a CRA that's similar to this. Uh, this is a Colrain CRA number three. You're really, obviously familiar with the North Gate Mall. Uh, as you know, I'm sure there were many vacancies in the mall and the township approached us and asked us if we could set up a CRA. Uh, it contains seven commercial properties that include a demolished department store, adjoining shopping mall, vacant facilities, and small retail and service businesses. The condition of the properties in the proposed area varied, some in good condition and some in poor. Uh, so I do want to point that out, some, not everything has to be in poor condition. There can be nice structures in, within the CRA. I should point out, like, the City of Cincinnati CRA is almost the whole city, so there's very differing sizes of CRAs. The condition of the properties in the proposed area varied, oh, I'm sorry, I read that, uh, demolished department store pad along with vacant Dillard's facility had a negative impact on the vitality of the entire shopping district. The high vacancy rate and visible decline highlighted the need to incentivize investment. Colrain Township asked HDC to establish the CRA, uh, to, uh, encourage investment in the property and stabilize the mall. The third one, uh, that we thought we would highlight is in Sims Township, uh, the CRA number two. This is the corridor on, along Montgomery Road and Fields Erdel, uh, includes residential property, uh, in the southern, western part of the CRA. It was established to provide incentive for redevelopment of the Montgomery Road cor- commercial corridor. A revitalized commercial center along with incentives from the proposed CRA will serve as a catalyst for improvements in the surrounding residential structures. Sims Township requested that HDC establish a CRA, uh, to encourage new types of development and reinvigorate both the residential portion of this area and Montgomery Road Commercial Corridor. So we pointed out those three, just to give a background of CRAs that have been approved by the county as well as certified by the state of Ohio, so that we can give you some context on what's been approved before. Uh, this is part of the, the presentation that was done last week, just basically what, what are the benefits? We can, uh, the commissioners can approve up to 100% on real property tax abatements and then, uh, up to 15 years. And again, that's just kind of repeated here for both residential and commercial. Those are the terms and the, uh, possible incentives. We went through the process last, last, uh, week. Uh, this process starts off with the community and is approved by the county and then certified by the state. Um, I can go through all those details if you'd like me to, or...
Can I ask a question?
Um, Harry, the, um, as I read the code, um, both the local community or the county can establish a CRA. Is that right?
Well, to clarify, local municipalities can do it without the county, but townships have to go through the, the county.
Okay.
So the township cannot do it on their own.
Sometimes the term municipality has been used interchangeably to also include a township.
The legislation also mentions unincorporated areas have to go through the county.
Mm-hmm.
So I believe that's a township.
All right, so there's no township option to create a CRA?
Right, a township has to go through the county.
All right, thank you.
Uh, we've kind of talked about this, but abatements can be granted after a CRA is officially certified by the state on both commercial projects and residential projects. On the commercial, uh, the abatement must be approved before any construction or project work begins. Abatements, terms, and percentage can be negotiated up to the maximum stated in the enabling legislation, and abatements cannot go higher than 50% without school board approval. In residential, applications for abatement are filed after the work is complete, so this is completely the opposite. Residential, they just, uh, apply after they're done. Uh, they show like a certificate of occupancy and they, um, document what they invested and then the auditor will add them to the tax abatement program. Um, and as I, I've been trying to make clear is that you understand when you approve this, the residential can go forward as long as they meet the conditions outlined in the So now getting into the two CRAs, um, that we're talking about today, we thought, uh...
Harry, one other thing. The, um, the code also requires that there be a finding in the request of, that's made to the county, that, um, with respect to the housing facilities, uh, or structures of historical significance, that new housing construction and repair of existing facilities, uh, or structures, uh, have been discouraged.
Correct.
What is the finding here of the discouragement of, of...
Can I, it's in the...
You're about to get into...
Yeah, I'm going to explain in each situation why we came up with that, yeah.
Go ahead.
And I also want to point out that we've added additional information than you originally had. I personally decided, after there is some controversy here, to drive through the CRAs myself. And so I've documented, uh, in the Springfield Township case, I've added some more photos to document the disinvestment, and we will add those to your packet for Thursday in the housing survey. As far as the, uh, Sycamore Township one, I, I think the existing photos document the conditions, so we'll just talk about those as well.
Okay.
So in, um, Springfield Township, the proposed CRA has subdivisions that were built primarily in the late 1960s and 70s. The area has seen a lack of investment and turnover in ownership. Also, the school district is looking to sell 9.2 acres to a residential developer who wishes to construct approximately 30 to 35 single-family homes. CRA boundaries include some small retail properties and the proposed CRA will encourage new investment to the area. And those are the terms that are being proposed. So these are some of the photos of the houses within the CRA. Um, and I, I want to point out that photos don't always do justice to the conditions that you see in, in face-to-face and from the sidewalk, so they don't always come across clearly, but there is an individual, there's a, a spreadsheet that will be in your packet that identifies 10 very specific things that were documented in terms of like, the roof is, is either in good or bad condition, the fascia, the gutters, the sidewalk, et cetera.[1762.33] So this is a house that I, or two houses that I wanted to add, that I think are a little more obvious about the disinvestment. The top one is a house that has the door boarded up and the roof is in disrepair. The second one is a house along, I don't remember, it's a major thoroughfare on the western boundary of the CRA, but it's hard to tell, but it's kind of in disrepair. There's, it needs some tender care. This is another house that's in the CRA that shows, obviously, disinvestment, that this house has not been kept up. And that's the ones that I wanted to add for this one. So the Sycamore CRA is a smaller area of houses or multi-family units that were built between 1934 and 1968. So the last structure that was built in this area was in 1968. There has been little investment in the area for over 30 years, and this is a statement made by the township, so they can explain if you want to ask why they say that statement. The proposed CRA will help encourage new investment into the area that could lead to propose new mixed-use project. So to your point, Commissioner Portune, about discouraged investment, we figured since there hadn't been any new construction for over 50 years in this area, and that some of the properties were documented to have some of these problems that we talked about, paint missing on some areas and some other things. So that will be in your packet, how each property was evaluated by our staff. These are some of the photos. In this one on the far left, you can see there's some bad paint, but again, it's really hard to tell the condition of these things from photos from the street. I think discouraged investment is a subjective term, and so anyone could argue either side of this argument, I think, in this case. Just based on what we've seen approved at the state before, we think that this meets that standard, but I think reasonable people could disagree.
How is the discouragement of investment defined or characterized? I think that, you know, in looking at the other CRAs, or in particular, the, with respect to Anderson, Colrain, North Gate Mall area in particular, you had, you had a prior developer that attempted to do something, or started to do something, or tried to do something, and they failed or abandoned the project, or circumstances like that. And the CRA was brought forward for the purpose of trying to incentivize new developers to come in and develop. The argument, as I understand it here, with respect to Sycamore in the CRA and the specific issue of disinvestment, and the discouragement of disinvestment and the need, is that in those cases, you had other developers or other attempts or other efforts that did not produce new investment. In Sycamore Township, the argument is that you have the existing developer who wants to do the project, the Kenwood Gallery project, who has been in possession and ownership, and who has not made those investments. Is, do you see a distinction between those two? Is there a legal distinction between those two?
So to answer your first question, I don't think the Ohio Revised Code defines discouraged. We looked that up to try to find if there was a real specific definition of that. So that's why I say it's subjective, that's discretionary, based on whoever is looking at it and whether they agree with that or not. As far as the different developer, to be honest with you, we were not that aware of who owned these properties when we, you know, we knew the developers buying up properties in the area, but we were asked by the township to come in and document it, so whoever, we don't know if those were disinvested before the developer bought them or after they bought it. So I understand your distinction, Commissioner Portune, it's just not something that we were, we just went in and did the...
You didn't base your decision on that distinction?
No, because I don't see anything in the Ohio Revised Codes that differentiates between those, whether it's a new developer or an old developer.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions before we go to public speakers?
Yeah, I have a question about, I'm sorry.
Thanks. The CRA establishment process and roles, I don't know what page that is, and it says "community initiation," initiate, it looks like this.
Yeah.
And so, okay, so all of these things to the left were done, I'm assuming all of them were done, like coordinate with the school district, because we haven't, I haven't heard anything from the school district. All these points that you put in, they've been done?
So just to remind you, Commissioner, the student, the school district was here last week and they stood up and supported the CRA?
The one person you were talking about?
Deer Park School District, yeah.
The one person?
Yeah.
I haven't received anything, like, in writing or anything from them?
It's...
From them or anybody else?
I believe there should be something in your packet when you get it on Thursday.
Oh, when I get it on Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just wondering why all this extra information that you put in, which is great, to be able to see the homes and everything, why that didn't come first?
It's a good question. I, we, I didn't, I think that we could have done a better job documenting some of the distress in some of these areas.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why I wanted to get comfortable with it myself.
Uh-huh.
And so I just thought it would be, you would be more prepared to make your decision if you had more information, so I just wanted to include it.
Absolutely, yeah. And I remember you saying last time that if the development project is not approved by us, but the CRA is approved, you can do residential development without any approval.
Single-family and duplex?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that sort of makes me uncomfortable, that that can happen, but that's just my issue, so.
Sure.
So I have several other questions, but I'll wait for comments.
Okay. All right, thank you. Harry, we are going to move to public comment. The first card is giving his time to Jim LaBarber, so I'm going to call Jim first.
Somebody's deferring time.
Somebody deferred to you. Glenn?
I'm going to defer.
Halela.
I'm going to defer that time to Jack Flume.
So, all right. So that's two, two, and two, that's six.
Six. So no, no, I'm going to do my own.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to do mine.
Oh, I got you. All right, all right, all right, all right.
So two and four.
Your first then.
So Jim left two and Jack left four.
I'm on my way out here to get the document.
Oh. I thought you were just waiting here.
Uh-oh, well, so timeframes are out the window right now. Is it on, Jackie? It's on, go. You're on.
I'll have the 12 seconds.
All right, we'll give you a little extra time.
You'll get another...
We'll make sure you get your time.
Starting now, you got 20 seconds. It's like soccer games.
Okay.
That's right.
You were asking last time, why can't we compromise? I sent all three commissioners this information. Trustee Weedman and Connor vote the same, it's one vote. I've asked the developer to downsize over and over, they have refused. Residents in the press point to allegations of $10,000 given to Tom Weedman and pay-for-play. The developer has said he will get what he wants, and he has publicly stated he cannot do the project at this scale without a TIF or now a CRA. I support a development here, but not at this density. That's point number one. Number two, I believe this is a collusion, well, maybe that's strong, let's call it a wink and a nod that has gone on for years between Capital and Sycamore Townships, Administration, and Zoning Department. They created this by turning a blind eye to maintaining Capital's property, not holding them to the same standards as other Sycamore Township properties, and therefore allowing them to be in this condition that you now say qualifies for a CRA. As I have said, these conditions identified lack of corrective action by Capital and are self-created, self-inflicted, and self-serving. Point number three, HDC's Harry Blanton on June 18th described the CRA to us in a workshop meeting. A trustee asked our administrator, Greg Bickford, if there would be a public hearing for this process. Mr. Bickford said no. We are talking about a $130 million project about to receive millions of dollars in a tax abatement that was attended by eight public meetings, hundreds of residents, for over 30 hours, paid for by their own attorney, and now no public input is allowed. What about transparency? This is now a county issue. Shouldn't you afford the residents this opportunity? Number four, Capital and their lobbyists are working hard, making this fit the criteria for a CRA. This isn't an economically challenged area, across the street from one of the most successful malls in the Midwest. Number five, the original intent of a CRA was to help blighted distressed areas. By voting to move this forward, you are setting a new precedent. You are simply accommodating a wealthy developer and affording him the opportunity to overbuild. Perhaps the commissioners should question the procedures for evaluating a CRA area. Just one more thought I'm going to throw in. I want you to think about the consequences that would follow this, your actions today and Thursday. Capital's own traffic study shows nine lanes of traffic on a four-lane highway, a county road. Expansion will wipe out the Joseph A. Bank Trio Building parking, the front area, Wendy's, Mark Rippe's building on the left-hand side, as you go up Kenwood Road, all of these establishments. Hamilton County will be responsible to relocate those businesses. It could cost millions. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. All right, Jack Flume.
How much time is he giving?
Four minutes. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Four minutes, go.
Four minutes.
My name is Jack Flume, I'm a long-term resident of Sycamore Township, and my following remarks will be in opposition to the proposed CRA for some of the reasons that Jim LaBarber already gave. Holy cow, this is a A+++ location. That's a direct quote from Mr. Greg Fussera, who is with the developer, Capital Investment Group, and it was reported in the Courier, Cincinnati Business Courier, in April of 2018. He was shown the site by the administration of Sycamore Township, and at that point, Mr. Fussera or his company began to acquire the multifamily buildings that were located there, 24 of them. So several years ago, at least, probably three or four, this site had already been identified as appropriate for a large investment, which ultimately is $130 million. You asked some of the questions of Mr. Harry Blanton about the language of what is discouraged, what does it mean to discourage investment, what is blighting, and it's all, it's all somewhat subjective, and I understand that, and I accept that. I hope that the commissioners will be able to make a decision based on their perception and some of the comments that I'm going to make here, as well as others. The particular site is absolutely wrong to call it, to call the, to call the, the investment that's being made is, was discouraged by prior conditions. Let me tell you a little bit about what's going on in the Kenwood area, because that is a viable, very vibrant economic development area. There are 11 major projects going on. I'll quickly go down through them. There's going to be a new 100,000 to 200,000-square-foot office building constructed next to the FBI building. There's a new bank and office building being constructed, presently being constructed at the intersection of Kenwood and Montgomery. Grater's Ice Cream is moving to a larger store, from its existing store, to a larger store on Montgomery Road. Jewish Hospital, needless to say, is a major player in the area and has made literally hundreds of millions of dollars of investment. There's a developer presently bringing plans to the township for the construction of a church on Coogler Mill. That same developer will probably be back to the township for an office development in the Tri-Health Development on Galberth Road. There's a new development under construction at the present time just north of Galberth on Kenwood Road. There's a new office building, medical office building going up, presently under construction on Galberth Road, within a block of this proposed site. The mall, which is the crown jewel of Sycamore Township, and arguably, maybe not arguably, it is the best and most developed and successful mall in the region, is continuing to expand, bringing in high-end retailers such as Tiffany's and all the others in the so-called luxury That's the list of the developments underway. Does that sound like economic development is being discouraged? Does that sound like there are blighting influences in the area? I don't think so. The specific SIG site is what it is, because the developer has owned that property for a number of years and allowed it to deteriorate, and it's a self-inflicted wound, self-inflicted deterioration, that now he hopes to cash in on, he or she, I'm sorry, the developer hopes to cash in on as a form of what could best be described as corporate welfare. Well, I guess my time's up.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Standish Forton.
Standish Forton, Sycamore Township resident. I was also elected and founder of a civic association and recorded, I don't even know how many meetings that went till almost midnight, certain nights, where the residents came and spoke. So it has been characterized that the residents of Sycamore Township did not oppose this development, and you can even find TV interviews where the residents have stated they don't, they're not opposed to development, just the massive size of this development. And I'm in investments, I understand rates of return, I studied real estate at the University of Cincinnati Business School. What rate of return is acceptable for certain individuals varies depending upon those individuals. What I'm afraid is occurring here is that public dollars are being used to juice up the returns that are anticipated off of this project. I had to take my time away from my family and work to come down here again. There are many residents that cannot afford that. If this passes, tax dollars are going to be taken away from the county and all the programs that we hear need funding, as well as the township. The township will also incur additional expenses should this development go through. I have asked the township repeatedly, as many residents have, how much tax revenue would this abatement cost the township? A simple question. I've been waiting for months. Has the county evaluated how much tax revenue is going to be lost from approving this? Like I said, I'm in finance, this is a fiduciary decision, and it's a simple one if you have simple information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Bickler. Good afternoon.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Greg Bickford, I'm the Sycamore Township Administrator. So I'm here under strange circumstances. I have two trustees voted one way and one trustee voted another way, so that kind of puts me as staff in the middle of this. Just a couple of things to point out. The Board did vote two to one to approve this particular creation of the CRA. To a couple of points I heard brought up, development in the area, you're right, it is a hotbed for development, but for whatever reason, this property has never been able to develop. Why? I can't answer that, I'm not sure, but every other property around there seems to have investment, invested in it. So that's a good question as to why it hasn't happened. What's interesting, it has been township now over 20 years. Those properties look the same today as they did 20 years ago. I searched back through the records to find building permits, to find zoning permits, I find nothing, dating back to 1995, which is about as far as the records go for that. So, you know, from the township standpoint, from two of the Board members' standpoint, they did vote to approve this CRA to get development started on the property, because development has languished on that property for a very long time. Many developers would come to us and say, "Well, I'd like to develop that property," and then they looked at the economics of it, and it was very difficult to do. So this is one way to get that property started. A couple of other points, tax dollars are not going to be taken away from the county, quite simply because you're now going to have more of an economic advantage to the property. There'll be increased property taxes, there will be increased services, and Sycamore Township stands to greatly benefit from those services as well. If this development does not happen, Sycamore Township receives no additional revenue, the county receives no additional revenue. If development happens, at the absolute minimum, you're guaranteed what you get today, there is no change to that. On top of that, the school board will receive a significant investment in their tax return on this as well. Development, it's an investment they do not have today. So, again, tough position here, because I've got trustees going in different directions, so I'm just kind of stating some of the facts from the township side, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in. Our next speaker is Doug Mormon. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name's Doug Mormon, I'm with Development Strategies Group. We represent a number of developers in the region, including CIG, which is the developer of this particular property. I just wanted to take a few minutes and underscore what Harry Blanton had to say and offer a little bit different perspective. Our view is, people that work with economic developers regularly, is that economic development now is a partnership, that it requires partnerships, it requires public-private partnerships in order to go forward. We see this throughout, not only Cincinnati, we see it throughout the region, throughout the state of Ohio, throughout the footprint where we do business. We have a phenomenon in this region of the country where labor costs are going up, land costs are going up, the cost of construction materials are going up, but our rent rates are not keeping up. And in order to make these projects work from an economic perspective, we have got to have partnerships with government. And those aren't really what you would call unilateral partnerships. Government benefits from these as well. As Mr. Bickford just suggested, this project will generate revenue to the county, it will generate additional property tax, it will generate transient occupancy tax, it will generate sales tax. These are all new dollars to the county, which is an interesting point to make on the heels of the budget presentation that we heard just earlier. of the budget presentation that we heard just earlier today. The CRA is an important economic development tool. As has been said, it is commonly used throughout Ohio to help make these projects financially viable. We think this is nothing out of the ordinary. We think that this project in particular, as was stated, is one in which we are looking at apartments that are more than 60 years old. They've not realized investment, meaning the previous owners had not invested in these properties. We heard about some of the good things going on in Sycamore Township. You might almost call this a gap in the smile, and it needs to be corrected, and this is an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yeah, yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Doug, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
You seem very fluent with the issue of, of the revenue, the new revenues that this will generate. Can you share with us what those numbers are? How much more money the county is going to receive in increased property taxes and other new revenues from this?
I didn't bring those numbers to the podium with me, Commissioner Portune. We have those numbers. What I can tell you, just in a quick summary, is that the summary of the sales tax, in summary, the sales tax, the additional property tax, and the TOT tax will generate approximately $600,000 in new revenue to the county, but we have those numbers specifically that we can provide to you in each of those categories.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that number again.
It's, it's more than $600,000 from the TOT, the sales tax, and the additional property tax, and that does not include, that's just to the county. That does not include what will go to Deer Park Schools in the pilot agreement that the developer has with the schools.
And what, how much is that, do you know?
I know there's an initial payment of $1.2 million to the schools, and then there's a sliding scale of, I don't have the specific numbers with me, but it's several hundred thousand dollars, and it slides over the course of the agreement with the county downward.
So the, the schools are getting a pilot payment?
Yes.
Because otherwise, they're, they would not get an increase in property tax revenue. Is that right?
That's correct.
So what property tax revenue is the county going to get then in an increase? Aren't they being, what's being abated?
There is a, there's a, a difference between what the county receives now and what the county will receive when the abatement is in place. And I don't have the numbers here at the podium with me, and I don't want to give you the wrong numbers standing here, but we, we will provide those numbers to you.
Apply those to us before Thursday.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And I was going to hold my question until the end, but since you're, you're up there and we've started in, on questions, I do want to draw a distinction here, because the CRA, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it is not 100% abatement, it's 50%, and so I think that is an important distinction to make. So what we're talking about is not a reduction in revenue, it's the upside, we're only talking about the upside here, and so it's the amount of the upside that we forego through the CRA.
That's correct.
And it's less than what would have happened under a TIF.
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure we understand what this particular CRA represents.
We are only talking about the incremental new value of the property.
That's right.
The baseline remains the same.
And also, the timeframe here is a 15-year timeframe as opposed to a 30-year timeframe, which I think was what we were contemplating, or rather, the township was originally. So 15-year timeframe, 50/50 split, on the upside revenue generated by the development in addition to the hotel motel tax that's generated by the hotel, and obviously any sales tax that kicks off the property as well. So I just, I just want to clarify, because I was trying to put some of this together in my own mind, and because we've, we've kicked around a couple of things here, but there are some, I think, important distinctions to be drawn here.
The pass is approved 100%. It'd be, it'd be $100.
Is it?
100%. That's what the pass had the duration, for 15 years versus 30.
Oh, I, I thought it was a 50/50. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, let.
Those speakers are talking about, do you have anything?
Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on a minute. Okay, we've got two more speakers. We've got two more speakers, unless you have any questions here? Okay. All right. And I'm sorry I misrepresented that. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
You didn't agree with him.
But I thought I heard that. David Bestos is next.
I'm going to defer to Greg. I'll shoot him.
All right. Greg Fusaro is next, and you'll have four minutes.
Four minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you all. Appreciate it. I want to clarify a couple of things that were said earlier and answer a question that Commissioner DuMoss had. The, we do have a agreement with the school board, and I'll get you a copy of that agreement. And, and Commissioner Portune, to, to refer to that, the negotiated settlement with the school board includes a one-time upfront payment that they'll utilize to air conditioner, their junior and senior high schools, and then negotiate an annual payment that starts out at about $200,000 per year, then goes to $300,000 a year, and then to $400,000 a year.
For what time period, Greg?
That is for a 30-year time period.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, of course, they go to the actual, whatever the actual taxes are after that period of time. And just to correct a couple of things that were said, Mr. Flume referred to nine lanes of traffic on Kenwood Road. First of all, the, the county engineer, Mr. Hubbard, requested the traffic study be done not only for today, but for 2040, 21 years in the future. And we were required to assume that traffic on Kenwood Road increased 3% a year. Under those conditions, in 21 years, several solutions to the fact that all the intersections at that time could fail, one of them was that the number of lanes on Kenwood Road be increased. There were several other solutions as well in terms of different signalization, different turn lanes, that sort of thing. So there's nothing in today's traffic report that speaks to nine lanes of traffic in terms of today. Obviously, over the future, as traffic increases in many areas, things are going to have to be done to mitigate that traffic.
Do you know how many lanes are attributable to the estimated natural 3% growth in traffic irrespective of whether this development goes forward or not?
Actually, that, that conclusion and recommendation by the traffic study company and endorsed by the county was without our development.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay.
So our development had no impact on?
No impact on that number.
The fact that the traffic in 2040, using that 3% a year assumption in growth, our, our development has no impact on the failure of those intersections. So to state that the county's going to have to spend more money than they would if not for our development, absolutely not true. The other thing, Commissioner Portune, that you raised in terms of some of these CRA districts, both the Sims Township and the Anderson Township districts were, were not done because of any deterioration or blighted areas. They were done to encourage additional commercial development in very good areas. Anderson Township, as I'm very familiar with, because our company lost the bid to actually do that redevelopment, but that CRA was put in place to encourage development on a site that was going to be difficult to develop and where public infrastructure was needed, parking garage and improvements to the, to the intersection there. So these were absolutely done by the county for that specific purpose. The other thing I, I want to make sure that you understand is that, again, in, in the democratic process, the Sycamore Township trustees approved the development, okay? This site was zoned, specifically, an overlay was created for this site, because it's along the Kenwood Road corridor, to promote a intense commercial development. The planned development that we presented was approved by the township trustees, and in fact, the township trustees approved the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask one question and then open it up for further questions, and I would hope, not for you, but the township administrator, would you please come forward? I, I just want to ask a couple, really, one question about the process. So we know that it was a two-to-one vote. We know that there were, there was some back and forth at the public hearings about, you know, whether or not people wanted to have this moved forward. I'm wondering if throughout that process, if any kind of compromises were made, or if the developers were in a position to say, well, given what we've heard from the public, we're going to do this adjustment or that adjustment. Did that take place during these public hearings?
So there was some discussion back and forth. The developer held some private meetings that we were not privy to. The original plan came in, and it had more units, and it had a four-story residential building towards the rear of the property against the single-family units. That got pushed farther away from the property line, and it got reduced to three stories. I believe the number of units was decreased as well. So there was some back and forth. Now, your definition of back and forth is going to be different than anybody else's, so there definitely was some back and forth. The Board of Trustees approved again, two to one, the development with, I believe, 28 conditions of varying degrees in terms of buffering, in terms of architecture, in terms of setbacks, in terms of use, in terms of traffic management. There's a whole bunch of things that went into that discussion.
Okay. And so when I met with residents a long, it's been a while back, and they talked about some traffic concerns, were those also part of the 28 conditions?
Well, the, the traffic concerns were addressed with a light, and one of the conditions of the traffic light, it has to be, just to kind of get a little technical here, it goes, ODOT maintains Montgomery Road, so ODOT has a system called Sentrex, and all the signals that have been added in Kenwood on the county roads are part of that Sentrex system as well. And the last signal was upgraded just last year. As you know, during the holidays, we use an engineering firm that will sit there and actually watch the traffic. The system is designed to adjust itself, but on days when it gets overloaded, we have an engineer that manually watches and changes. Now that those county system, the county system is integrated with the ODOT system, we can better manage the traffic. In addition, there's also been a new bus stop put out there. It's the number four route. Now makes several stops along Kenwood Road, which never happened in the past, so there's been advancements to the transportation network out there over the years.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Sir, the administrator, thanks.
Ma'am.
The 28, the 28 conditions, I'd like to see a copy of that.
Sure.
And if there's any record of the adjustments that have been made that the residents had asked for.
Sure.
I'd like to also see that. And then your opinion, why has the site been so difficult to develop? What's your opinion?
I wish I could answer that question. You know, the first, when I started with the township in 2000, I had a developer approach us about doing a strip mall there, and they just could not make economic sense of putting a strip mall there. And as time went on, different proposals came forth. There was a mixed-use proposal that was in the early discussion stages around 2010. That kind of went south, and that's when Capital picked up on it and decided to start looking at that property as well. I, I can't answer why it has not been developed. Probably because there's 23 different property owners, that's a very difficult assembly to do, especially in an area where we have land going for approximately a million dollars an acre. It's, it's very difficult to do. Any development that's been talked about has been on a site that is one or two properties. It's a larger site. It's, it's a, it's part of an assembly. It's stuff that's already been put together, and this was one that was 23 different property owners.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
No more.
Okay. All right. Thank you for being here and for the comments. I just want to remind the commissioners and the administration that we held these two items on our agenda last Thursday, so they will be coming forward on this Thursday.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. The only thing left on the agenda is an executive session, and so I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121, Point 22-G4 to conduct a review negotiations or bargaining sessions concerning employee compensation or other terms and conditions